Thank you Dr Kika. Et duze wa kesinomchonishwa ushinga. Et duze wa kesinomchonishwa ungubane. Et duze wa kesinomchonishwa uchonga malana. Et duze wa kesinomchonishwa umteto. Et duze wa kesinomchonishwa uchonishwa umtane ngosuka hula. Ngizwa kanya bembiza ngoka hunda. Angaswase wenzani jala. Kambafunba yeme ya uchonishwa. Um, ngibonga akulwa uchonishwa kuti niwa zuptole tuwa. Logutintama lelo uchlangan. Samba sana nama officialsige maneni eh uchlabengso banolhlelo. Loguwa thula eh. Oguha minzela juu bengelela kini non kenjlin. Ni bengelela be fundis mebe corner. Ni bengelela makanzela eh a corner. Niya tembu kutila ba. Aba seven sense sana naboba sazo ngenzelushel. Loguwa zukutimba mugelegale. Oh za wetuwa ba makanzela ngoba. Tinana bo sisas menes fanaayo. So kuti umsebenzwe tu paramsele za hala. Jali mva gafias. Eh so eh le tuna banchonishwa njitu balo umsebenz. Selia ngakona pele. So ge ngia fisah juu bengelela ngoketilayo. Niya kena pokuneni ngelalele ngene jala. Oguuti makna makanzela sewa pa le kuse. Swa mugelegale uchlanganwen. Ngoba aba hundu mparat. Ningpa lele ama kosi mekona. Wenzelugutiswa mugelegale. Eh eh unga tiwa safige uchlanganwen. Senza uwu isinto espo kaya. So ge ni fisah juu bengelena ma officials. Eh lisleycha eh samba nao. Ama officials eh Department of Education eh apuma kuzwe longe. Ama officials education napuma ru province ma e corner. Me seka official nenca zukutumchanganu ungaani. I was saying eh eh. There will be, I'm sure there will be proper way of eh. Eh using other languages because I'm 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 worried about singing out English. Because eh I might be accused eh of singing out one language. But there will be translations um eh proper when eh the bill is explained to us because. The we we have all the intentions that eh. Everyone must understand what is this meeting about. So we we. I'll use eh both Zulu and English. Um, I'm not very good with English but eh I'll try eh eh. Just to so that we 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 take everyone eh along. So ka official nenzo ta zukutumchanganu. Eh. Njobana zukuti unom tetos vivinyo oshongosoayo. Eh. Obizwa ne basic education laws amendment eh bill. B two B twenty twenty two. Abati mebe ubisa ra official ne bati ben. Wenzelugutis shesha sazo kutis kunangentefanayo. Umsebenzwe tu ngengeko mitlaze enfundo ngenzeluguti ikatiseleto. Uchlanganuka la nje wenzelugutisina be. Nogupigisana sesiparatinendaao. Uguzo lalala. Oguuti abanbagiti matini ngalo umtetos vivinyo. Tetos vivinyo rele osu ujulile esgabenska zwe longe. Ingoba osu ngaprovinses manje setfanelegeswe. Isinvo zumparatuwa wazuna danje ngeko mitlaze enfundo kuti. Ni tini ngalo umtetos vivinyo eh opegalele oguti gunungiswe. Eh imteto epegel epegelale nes enfundo. Niya fisah zukuti ni ikatiselebanbagiti ngoba. Ukona okulima ora inguljenzo kumaana. Oktuwa zikukulima na o glomchetujo. Samba namyameli gela. Bazo ikaza abamele kuti. Ngogo umtetu uti ngetakonezi tenfuguiyimalula. Ezineke glomchetu. Osu kumanga uchlangenze timanso ngamani ngakuluma. Ngoba ziku. Ukona bati sikulima oguti ngane ngane kfunele ifundiswe. Uka zinoglala ne koleni. Agu koglomchetos vivi. So ge ngenzeluguti ni ikatiseleke ngoba. Ukona ezintey kulima ora inguljenzo kumana. Ezikuluma ngesintey fana nalezo. Ukona oguti inkolene ngayo ipinde zibenamanda. Asaya pukwa wanka manda makavu eh bodies. Ayiswa unyango. Nomago bapati bemyango. Oguzyo ogunga afundi wa yagale ngoba agu aguko. Agbegiwa nganolo shobu. So ngenzeluguti mi funu uzu kutinila lelsi isee. Neskati abamele be ikaza lomchetu ngoba. Eh imbono yenu eh ibalegi. Bota foot imbono yenu ma ngare ngayo nimbono eh ekube twiles. Lomchetos vivinyo. Kuzo ba imbono nje eh ngegesese ben sendao. Ni zo nuu zukutisila lelsi isee. Oguze eswe kuti utini umtetos vivi. Oguenzeluskati stoli tu balo begimbono. Ube imbono yendo atetu es tulanyo yo na na njenji. I was saying um our legal advisors and our legal team eh they will present the bill um. And they will explain in detail. What this bill is about. But also they will explain. I'm sure I'll ask Monica to do this right at the beginning. Explain what is this bill it's lot about. So that eh we don't eh confuse ourselves or don't get confused. And discuss things that are not in the bill. I know there are certain things that are circulating eh in eh different social media. I was listening to a voice note this morning as I was driving here. Um, one of them says the bill says we'll teach five year olds eh what is sex. How to sleep eh we'll teach them how a twelve year old must do abortion. It's not in the bill. Um, I'm saying it in English because the voice note. How a twelve year old must do abortion. I do want to carefully carefully listen. Um, I I hope eh there are also enough copies eh for those who want to. Eh eh go and read properly what is in the bill. So that our suggestions and comments. We we are limited to what the bill contains. Um instead of eh things that eh are really sometimes misleading. Um, sometimes misleading, they apparently sometimes because of ignorance. So let's not entertain those things. Let's entertain why this bill is important because as you know that eh. For example, the bill touches on issues of grade R. Which were not part of eh of the Schools Act um eh as we know it. So every now and then you amend the laws of the country. So this is an exercise, very important exercise because it touches on the future. Of eh our learners, our educators. Um, I so educators must take an interest because I know there there are sections that deal with. Them and doing business with the state for example. So it's it's a it's a very important eh bill. I would eh I would rate it as high as the National Health Insurance Bill. Um eh so we we really really do want to hear your voices. We are not doing this exercise just to tick boxes. And we are not doing you a favor. The construction demands of us to do this exercise. So. Benitie mpatu agiti. Obu nyokbalagele ngeni ngeni lena je yokuvuda oguti. Lo lomchanganau ayu agukubu ufe fe. Nomubele excellence enabona. Um tetos segelosa esazenze la ona jenaze. Espo kaya oguti segua zukuzagi ni mabzoshayim tetu. Sinlalale izivozenu. Sa ge kumutonenzela eh ufe fe eh nomubele. Yingo ba kfunele suwenzelokukutimabzoshayum tetu. Seze mparatini agiti. Sezilalale izivozayo. Oguenzelugutumcheto. Ni wa gube ohui. Ungatiwa umtetu nje ngoba eh ayi segu shale. Osu nje kano ba muka hula benzum tetu. Um tetu ngoba bantasa ningsi Afrika ma inga yao. So ge si 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 letu umtetos segelola. Sizo kena ge smambisana ngoguti. Neskati benzize tu. Ni palepans eh imbozo yenu ngoba. Sizo ba yega bazema ke wenza isetu. Ni palembuz. Uzo tmebe kreta. Ngonaga ma membersla. Ayi varash na mshaish. Noba ayi tuoli tuwa logu kunuma lesindu. Uzo tmebe kreta. Sinige ni na yituba. Koka ngoba si ba ningi. Mangasenugnigi ahu weto wushuti. Guenzelagasameksa sekenida. Ogu ngalula ageloko. So sizo nita ma wugutika. Osu kulumeh isikatese nele. Umbono akonzo agale. Zimbele keta lasisenz. Ogu tube gumbono. Ogu tu kabanuti. Um tetos segelosa wenzalajaani umtetos vivinyo loskuma nao lepe. Omenzwa njaanube ngono. Nomu ya utanda o ube ube njalo ubu njalo ya ovuma. Nomu ya pixana nao. Bota footina zizi zatu kabanuti. Ogu zo ya pixano nao ngasetfawu kuti. Uwa vume la na nao. Logu uzo wenzuguti songe simeba nengasutoli tuwa. Logu pa hula. Koka boma ipi ndifuti into esishio ba agiti. Me ngichlangano ito ziswa oguti. Ni tanda juu zezwa M P. Katesi umtunge kulime entefana ngoba na. Kotanfune futi ngubish. Um chabenge sengi bega nezule sklogele. Eh eh me seka kotani shokot entefana. Sizo kena ge usbambisale lapoge. Uko sazana uisino umeli. We komitlaze enfundo na wazuna tano umeli sham tetu. Kotafuti ube we wutabe umeli eh gule komitlaze enfundo. Uyena gozo besenzela isetu lo. Ogu zo be ikatisa raba zineka jana zalomcheto. I was appealing that eh when they make the presentation, our legal advisor. Eh Monica Wilson who who's going to be doing the presentation. On the eh sessions of this eh amendment at. I appeal that you take notes. Because we'll only allow you to to make comments or ask questions. After she has done with her presentation. I don't know whether they've made arrangements in terms of how the translations would be done. Eh as they do that. Please take notes and when when they are done, we'll then open the floor. For everyone who wants to make a comment or a suggestion to better the law. Eh the comment that we're not going to take is a comment that says we must not eh. Eh we must not have the amendments. Eh the the comments we need are about how we make these amendments eh amendments better. But also comments that eh suggest whether you agree or disagree with the with the amendments as as they stand now. But I'm also appealing that eh if eh a colleague has eh asked a question that you wanted to ask. Eh it's okay, you that question will be the same. Rather not ask it because it will have been asked. So the response will will eh eh in any sense be the same. So let's say that's how we're going to run our meeting. We will try and eh eh fit um as many voices as possible. But as you know, meetings have starting time and ending time. Eh we're not going to have a meeting until next day. There there are options um of eh writing to us as the committee. I'm sure that will be made eh eh it will be made available to you. Um, there are forms that are going to be circulated as well. Um where you can also make your own eh suggestions without raising them here. All suggestions, all of them eh will be taken into account. Whether they're in a written form or you 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 stood up and said them here. So they will be taken they will be taken into account. But also there is a process that is still open. That you write to the committee and make your proposals as well. So leo leo aba ngafisu no baba ngazukwazu kulima. Basena yituba logu spalela. Kunefomo bazo ikipala. Ezogwenzuguti. Uwa zupala in ngomozako. Ni vumeleki lukpala na nomo ipi ulimu. Any language. Umati ngoba kupaliweskiis ngennguazu pau. So laoma forms neneluma lo lukpala imbono yenu eh. Sizo ifunda yonkimbono ngoba. Kfunele umtetu espo kutisku wenzeloko. So kukona footiskati savuliwe. Uti nipalele yikomiti even after lomchanganu. Uti palele komitin. Ogu ti imtinimbono yenu eh ngalo umtetos vivi. So without really wasting your time, it is now eh ten two eh eleven. So ngizo kela. Usisi tatu tu eh ofundelege wakoka bazo umtetu. Ogu tazo skazela eh o ngagutige. Umiswe njanzi tini paramiso. Uzalomcheto eh sivivinyo obizwa ne. Ngepela official ne eh obi ogutoa i basic education laws amendment bill eh. Monica, I hand over to you now.
Sanbani. Good morning. Morning to the chairperson. Morning to the honourable members, our colleagues. And the colleagues who have also joined us virtually. And to all the stakeholders who are here present and the ones who have joined us online. And as the chairperson has said, I'm going to be presenting this bill known as Bella in short. Basic Education Laws Amendment. And the background to this bill, if I can just give a short background. Is that it has emanated from National Department of Basic Education. Because the minister identified that the review of education legislation. Is one of their strategic priorities. So once the minister had identified this as a priority. She picked out two bills for amendment. One is the South African Schools Act. And the second one is the Employment of Educators Act. So the bill we are going to be speaking about has about forty clauses. Which are amending the South African Schools Act. And about ten clauses at the end. We will be speaking about amendment of the Employment of Educators Act. Now, what are the reasons? Because the minister cannot just decide to amend laws without a reason. And one of the main reason is that there have been a lot of court judgments. A lot of litigation that emanated from especially admission of learners. The language policy and issues of discrimination against learners when it comes to admission. So the minister wants to make sure that there is implementation of those court judge judgments. And the decisions that were made in order to protect the rights of all people who are involved in those kind of cases. And to give effect especially to the Bill of Rights. If you've got a copy of the bill and you actually go to page thirty six and thirty seven of the bill. You will see a summary of some of those cases. Some of them are from schools like Emelo School in Free State. You will see cases there from um Welcome High School. Harmony High School in Free State. Some of you may remember those cases. You will see them on pages thirty six and thirty seven of the bill. And they will explain to you what the minister was ordered by the courts to implement. The next reason is that um they want to provide for financial and public accountability. Especially for school governing bodies. Because school governing bodies manage public funds. So there has to be accountability and reporting on public funds. And then they also want to improve the systems on the admission of learners. There have been a lot of issues on the admission of learners. Especially relating to the kind of documents that parents are required to submit. Now, they want to improve that system. And one of the things you will find in the definitions, which is a good thing for the parents. Is there's there's now a very comprehensive list of the documents that parents can give. Including affidavits, bad certificates, unabridged. So if you go to the definitions and you please read. Please read the required the definition of required documents. So that there is no misinformation about the requirements for admission of learners. So that was another thing that eh is leading to this um amendment. And then they want to provide additional powers, regulatory powers, yes. To the H O D and to the M E C. So that it makes it easier for them to make eh decisions. And also for the appeal process for anyone who is not satisfied by decisions. Taken by the H O D, taken by a school. Then that process is explained very well, you'll see when we go through the bill. And then addressing other issues such as central procurement. This you will see, it is not something compulsory. There's a lot of consultation that needs to take place between the H O D and school governing bodies. And they also want to look at clarifying eh the home education, the process of applying. The role of parents in home education and such issues. And then also to bring in a clause about dispute resolution. So that whenever there is a dispute in matters that affect the right of a learner. Cases don't take years and years to resolve. So they want an eh a process that is going to be faster, an alternative dispute resolution mechanism. And then finally, the other reason is that there are of course technical reasons. Such as removing some obsolete words or clauses that were there before. Um, the minister, when they started this process, as far back probably as twenty seventeen. They have gone through a very comprehensive consultation process. And in twenty seventeen, the minister received over five thousand written submissions. The minister has also consulted extensively with school governing bodies. Teacher unions and home education stakeholders. The minister has also consult consulted with Nedlock. And went as far as getting a social impact assessment done. And all the recommendations that came from that assessment have been incorporated in this bill. So what is important to note is that it's you must have the correct bill when you make your comments. Because since twenty seventeen up to now, there have been very many changes that have been made. And you'll see that in twenty twenty one, again, the minister presented the draft that they had to cabinet. In twenty twenty two, it went to the Portfolio Committee in the National Assembly. And once it goes there again, they take into account all the comments that people have made. And they amend that bill as well. And eventually last year in twenty twenty three, we received the current bill that we are now presenting to you. So that bill has now been approved by National Assembly. It's gone to the National Council of Provinces. It's now referred to us as the Provincial Legislature. And through this committee, we are required by the constitution to get your comments. And that's why the chairperson says kindly give us comments on the correct bill. We have put it on our website. Now, if I can go into the bill itself. And I will go clause by clause, I think it is being um. I think it's there, I can't see what is on the screen. But eh if you look at clause one, if you have a copy of the bill, it's also there in isi Zulu. Explaining it clause by clause. The first clause deals with definitions. And there are various definitions that have been amended in the South African Schools Act. And the first one is the one that the chairperson mentioned. That basic education has now been defined to include grade R, which was not there before. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Includes grade R eh so that it can be aligned with the national curriculum statement. The next um definition, I will not go through all of them, I'll just highlight some of the important ones. Or the controversial ones. Competent assessor. Competent assessor is going to mean an educator who is registered with S A S. Or is recognized profession in the field of education. Or is a person or body registered with the South African Qualifications Authority. And this competent assessor is important for people who are doing home education. Parents who teach their children at home are going to be required, as you will see when we get into the bill. To ensure that a competent assessor gives a report. And that's the definition of who that competent assessor will be. The next highlighted definition is corporal punishment. Because this despite being abolished is still happening in schools and in hostel accommodations. And corporal punishment has now been widened to mean any deliberate act against a child. That infects inflict pain or physical discomfort. And it's not just hitting a child. It's also slapping, pinching, kicking, shaking, throwing objects. Forcing children to stay in uncomfortable positions. You know, when teachers or people make them do uh squats and things that they shouldn't be doing as a punishment. Anything that forces a child to do exercises which are not in accordance with the curriculum. Right times one hundred that I'm naughty, I'm naughty. Things like that must be taken into account now because it's going to amount to assault. And anybody who does this to a child can face imprisonment if convicted up to a period of twelve months. And the next addition in the definitions is the word special education needs. And that is because uh all those special needs schools are mentioned a lot in the in the South African Schools Act. They haven't, it hasn't been properly defined, it is now defined. And other definitions that I want to power type to point out is home education. Which means a program of education for a learner that is alternate to school attendance. I think for school governing bodies, it's important for them to note the definition of what alone means. Because you will be required that if you enter into lease agreements or any other business. Things that you do with companies, you need to know the requirements. For instance, you may be required to get permission from the H O D. And the other one I'm emphasizing is the definition of required documents for admission of learners. And I think eh looking at the definition of drug is also important because. It has been expanded there to explain what a drug is. When the educators, I mean the principals do such a seizure in schools. And because we know of the problem of bugs in schools. So that is clause one on definitions. If I can now move to the page that starts with clause two. And clause two is about compulsory attendance. It is amending section three one of the South African Schools Act. And as we have mentioned, it's now making it compulsory that school will start from grade R at the age of six. So every parent or guardian must cause a learner to attend school. In the year in which that learner turns six. And it's now provided that if there is no just cause, it's not that you can just be arrested, there must be just cause. Or a reason, if there is just cause why that learner is not in school. Then the penalty conviction has been increased from six months to twelve months. So unlike what is being said out there that parents will now be arrested if you don't take your child to school. There has to be a reason why and just cause why that has not happened. And the H O D may actually write to a parent and inquire as to why that child is not in school. The next one is about a clause three. Is speaking about the monitoring of school attendance by educators. Principals and the school governing. principals and the school governing body. And the reason for monitoring is that there is a high rate of dropout and true, you know, true and uh children, learners, you find them out in the streets and things like that. And the role of the teachers has been clarified. Because you're a teacher and you are with the learners every day. If a student has not been in class for three days consecutive, then you're required to report to your principal. Then if the principal still finds out that learner is not in school for twelve, twenty four hours from when he got a report, then the principal must at least reach the family or find out what's going on. And then the principal must also inform the school governing body. So everybody has a role to ensure that there's monitoring of learners where it's possible. And then for the school governing body, they are required, when they have their code of conduct, to have a rule that speaks to punctuality and school attendance. Clause four, which has been a bit controversial, is amending section five of SASSA. And this is to deal with the admission of learners. And what this is providing is correct, that a school governing body must submit their admission policy to the head of department for approval. And any amendments that they make to that policy must also be submitted to the H O D for approval. And however, the H O D has a very uh comprehensive process that they have to follow in considering that application, that um um that policy. The H O D has to consult with the school governing body. H O D must check that that policy is actually in the interest of learners. H O D must also check on the resources of the school when they speak about their uh admission policy, as well as the needs of the community in that area that we are talking about. And this policy also speaks about uh there should be no discrimination for admission of learners in public schools. Including that if a learner does not have the relevant documents, they should be allowed to attend school. And now it's up to the principal to consult with the parents and make sure that they get the correct documents. If the school governing body is not happy with the process of approval or decline by the H O D, they have a right of appeal to the M E C. If a learner is also not happy that they haven't been admitted in a particular school, they also have a right of appeal. Clause five speaks to language policy. And as we know, language policy has determined by school governing bodies. But now this section is providing that the language policy must be limited to one or two of the official South African languages. And as we know now, sign language is also an official sign uh language in the in the country. So the school governing body must submit a language policy of that school and any amendments thereof to the head of department. And the head of departments, when like, once again, when they are, they are considering that policy, they must be satisfied that this language policy caters for the needs of the community in that area, the district within which that school is located. And the H O D has now been empowered that they can actually ask for a school to have more than one language of instruction. However, everything comes with a condition. The H O D, especially in section six, subsection fourteen, it says that the H O D must check the resources of that school if you are going to ask a school to have two languages of instruction. And there are other conditions that you will find in this section. The H O D also, when looking at the language policy, must really take into account the best interest of the learner, especially as provided for in the constitution, for the learner to be able to access basic education. H O D must also look at the enrollment trends, the changing numbers of learners who speak the language, and follow due process in doing all these things. And these two policies, the admission policy and the language policy can both be amended after a period of three years. And once again, anybody who is unhappy with the decision of the H O D, they have a right of appeal and there are very stringent timeframes for both the H O D and the M E C. So the H O D also needs to look at the timeframes that they have been given for them to approve or decline uh policies or any issues that have been submitted to them. Um clause six is amending section six A of SASSA. And all that it's doing is empowering the minister to appoint outside agencies or persons who can advise the ministers on matters relating to the national curriculum. Clause seven is amending section eight A. And this is to do with the code of conduct. And every code of conduct for a school must not just comply with the provincial law, but must comply with the constitution. And you will also know that, like I've said, there have been several judgments dealing with issues. And therefore, school governing bodies must consult with the parents, with the learners and educators and also look at the diverse cultures uh and beliefs of the learners that they have in school. There is also a provision in this section that says a parent can write and request for um exemption from certain parts of the code of conduct applying to their student depending on the circumstances. You will find that in detail if you read that section. Clause eight deals with the random search and seizure. And it is amending section eight A of the South African Schools Act. Previously, it used to be that the principal or their delegated person could only search a group of learners. Now they are empowered to search an individual learner. And this search and seizure is to deal with also dangerous objects and liquor or drugs that are brought into school. Because no one can bring dangerous objects, drugs or school. So the principal has a right for random search and seizure. The process is very detailed in section eight A on what needs to be done. And for instance, if there is reasonable suspicion, also how the H O D can involve the police and how the police can be required to assist in removing whatever has been found. So you will find that process of search and seizure in clause eight, section eight A has been amended. The next proposal is to amend section nine of SASSA. And this is on the list of serious misconducts. Now that we've talked about the code of conduct, we talked about search and seizure. There is now an expanded list on serious misconducts that affect learners. And this is to clarify what will now constitute serious misconduct and that can lead to suspension or precaution. And the process again that is going to be followed. And the list is long and it includes things like assault, bullying, drugs, dangerous objects being found on the learner, cheating in exams or anything to do with exams, theft, dangerous objects, you'll find that list in that in that has been amended. Clause ten, amend section ten of SASSA. And this is to provide that corporal punishment is abolished. I just read for you the definition of what corporal punishment means. So corporal punishment is abolished during a school activity or in a hostel accommodation for learners. And again, I said, any person who contravenes this can be convicted for assault for a period of up to twelve months. Clause eleven is amending section ten A of SASSA. And it prohibits uh initiation practices in a hostel or during any school activity. Clause twelve is amending section twelve of SASSA. And this is to do with a new school called specialized focus on talent schools. So an S C, a school governing body can apply to the M E C to be designated as a specialized school. It can be because of sports, arts, performing arts. And the H O D can also identify can also identify a public school and designated. Once again, a very comprehensive process has to be followed before this is done. And the process to be followed by the M E C such as notify the S G B, the parents, the community, representatives, uh labor unions, because there are a lot of implications. So consultation is key and it is provided for if you read that section twelve. Clause thirteen deals with the merger of one or more schools. And it's providing that in instances where two or more schools are to be merged and a new public school is established. That section is setting out the process that will be followed by the M E C. And once again, the M E C is required by this section to notify the parents, the community, including publishing of adverts in the newspapers, listening and taking in uh submissions and representations and submissions, not just from the community, the S G B, but also on matters of law. And also the M E C must take into account that the names of those schools must also be published. This existing school governing bodies and how they will have an interim school governing body if those uh school, if those schools are merged, that's also in the section. And other legal issues, you know, pending such as either a teachers on suspension or learners or disciplinary issues, including any other operational issues. It's all detailed in section twelve A of the proposed amendment. Section fourteen wants to amend section twenty one of SASSA. And this is the one that is going to empower the H O D to centrally procure learning, teaching and support material. But the key word here is that the H O D may in consultation with the school governing body. So uh this is not that the H O D just decides they are going to take over that process. There are words in this section read that the H O D may in consultation do so if it is going to be effective and if it is economic for utilization of public funds or because of uniform norms and standards. Clause fifteen is amending section twenty two of SASSA. And this is to empower the H O D to withdraw unreasonable grounds. Again, there has to be a reason, unreasonable grounds. And after complying with very comprehensive requirements, one or more functions of a school governing body. So withdrawal of functions is serious. So the H O D must inform the S G B of the reasons for such withdrawal and get representations from that school governing body. The section however does, and the H O D must listen to those representations before making that final decision. However, in an emergency, the H O D is empowered to take those functions and then can later reverse them if need be. And the H O D is also empowered to appoint people to perform those functions for a period of three months, but not more than one year. So again, a very detailed process of how the H O D can take over those powers of school governing bodies. Section sixteen is amended uh by amending section twenty three of SASSA. And this is empowering the school governing bodies to empower people from outside or within the community who have the relevant expertise to assist school governing body in the discharge of the functions. Because when you regulate the compliance that is required by school governing bodies, then the school governing bodies do not say, but we don't have the experts to do this. They are now being given power under section twenty three to co-opt those experts, whether it is lawyers, auditors or management or governance people. Because there is going to be requirement for them to have good governance in the management of public funds. So that is section twenty three of SASSA. Clause seventeen is amending section twenty four of SASSA. And this is to empower the minister to determine the numbers of school governing bodies, the election process and appointment in public schools for learners with special needs. It's no longer going to be the M E C. Once again, the minister must call for detailed submissions when the minister wants to do this. Section uh clause eighteen is amending section twenty four A of SASSA. And it's going to regulate uh membership of the governing body of a school with a specialized focus on talent, that new school that we spoke about. Because currently, this is not regulated. And they may want to have peoples in those bodies such as experts in the focus area that they want to specialize in, whether it's arts or sports. Clause nineteen is amending section twenty five of SASSA. And it's empowering the H O D to dissolve to dissolve a school governing body that has ceased or stopped to perform the functions that were allocated in terms of SASSA. Once again, the H O D must have very good grounds, reasonable grounds to do this dissolution. And once again, a school governing body that is aggrieved have a right to appeal to the M E C. And the H O D can, if they do this dissolution, they can appoint qualified people to perform the functions of that school again for a period of three months. Or the H O D can decide to extend that period, but not for a longer period than one year. Clause twenty is amending section twenty six of SASSA. And it's providing for, this is an issue of good governance, for the recusal of school governing members. So that uh school governing members have to declare their interests when they are going to take decisions in meetings. If they have a direct or indirect or financial interest in the matter or their family members or close friends or business partners. So for instance, when they are discussing recruitment of staff, procurement of goods and services, they have to declare their interests. They have to also disclose personal interests where they have companies. They have to disclose um gifts that they have received from service providers. And um such conflict of interest is well explained in the new section twenty six. Clause twenty one is amending section twenty seven of SASSA. And it says that no member of the school governing body will be remunerated or paid in any way for the performance of their duties or for attending meetings. It has to be voluntary. Clause twenty two is amending section twenty eight of SASSA. And it's empowering the minister, no longer the M E C, to determine the election of members of school governing bodies. The object or the reason for this amendment is that the norm for the election of school to norm or to bring in norms and standards in the election of school governing bodies and bring consistency in the sector. And then clause twenty three is amending section twenty nine of SASSA. And it provides that only a parent who is a member of the governing body and who is not employed in a school may be the chairperson of the finance committee of that school. Clause thirty two is now amended by clause twenty four of this bill. And this one is regulating the status of learners in school governing bodies. Before, they used to be referred to as minors in school governing bodies. It's now been changed to call them learners. And what this section is proposing is to prohibit the learners from taking part in the process of employment of educators, even non educators. They also cannot uh enter into contracts on behalf of the school. So they cannot sit, for instance, in the interview panels that are considering employment and recruitment of staff in the school. And they cannot vote on resolutions of school governing bodies. And equally, they will be protected from any personal liability. Clause twenty five is amending section thirty three of SASSA. And this one deals with closure of schools. So the M E C has to embark on a very uh comprehensive consultation process before closing a school. Once again, must inform in writing the school governing body, the parents, the community, um advertise, call for comments in the newspapers, including holding of public hearings. The section does however provide that the M E C, if they carry out a physical verification and they find that there are no learners registered in a particular school, that can be a reason for closing it. It's also providing that if it's a primary school with less than a hundred and thirty five learners, the M E C can also close that school. If it's a secondary school with less than two hundred learners, the M E C can close a school. But once again, M E C must give notice. But once again, M E C must give notice, as I've said. And make alternative arrangements for the learners who are in those schools. Including issues like learner transport. And the M E C must also, um, deal with issues of how those assets. What happens to the one school and the assets which were there. They must make a plan or arrange the M E C by law on how those assets devolve into the state. And the M E C must look at the interest of learners in the community. And the main reason also is for the effective use of state resources. So that's why we are encouraging that when people comment on the bill kindly. Look at the whole section in detail because there is much more than we can be able to present here today, so we are trying to summarize it. Close twenty-six, amend section thirty-six of SASSA. And this is providing that school governing bodies must seek approval of the M E C. To enter into lease agreements for any purpose, including loans, any financial obligations. Over drafts and such matters. So they must have written approval, if the lease, you know, schools like to lease buildings for purposes of supplementing their income. If the lease is for more than twelve months, then they must have approval of the M E C. And also because of the alteration of buildings. Or some school governing bodies entering into lease agreements right at the end of their term. And then leaving the new school governing body in problems and leases or contracts that they are unable to deal with. So that is the new requirement by section thirty-six. Close twenty-seven. It seeks a technical amendment, it's just to change the word direction to directives. Close twenty-eight, again for school governing bodies and how they manage their budgets. It's amending the current section thirty-eight of SASSA. And it's providing that there has to be a document that explains a budget of a school. Including the draft budget. And this must be made available to the parents. Before the budget is presented to the parents in the general meeting. So the S G B must inform the parents and avail that documents at least fourteen days. Before the general meeting of the parents. Equally, once that budget has been passed. And there are any deviations on the expenditure or whatever that was approved. Then the school governing body must inform the parents. Why they deviated from the budget that the parents approved and the reasons for such deviation. And the section details how the meetings for the budget will be held. Including that you must have a ten percent quorum of the parents. In the first meeting, if that doesn't happen, what happens in the second meeting, you'll find that in the proposed section thirty-eight of SASSA. Close twenty-nine is proposing to amend section thirty-eight A of SASSA. And this is to extend application to a state employee. Who is paid any additional remuneration or financial benefit. Again, go look at the definition of what, uh, financial benefit or benefit in kind means. It means where teachers have gone over and above and the school governing body decides they want to pay them but not a salary. The things including maybe exemption from paying fees, petrol card. Or such things, but again, they must be included in the budget. So you will find that in section thirty-eight A. And that employers, uh, may not hold permission for, uh, state employees to be remunerated. Close thirty. Wants to amend section forty-one of SASSA. And forty-one is about exemption from paying of school fees. And remember, we said some parents have problems with the documents. So that when they seek to be exempted from paying school fees. They don't have documents from the other parents, maybe they are divorced or they are separated or there is a conflict. And they are unable to get information from the other parent. Now this section is saying such a parent can actually give an affidavit. To show that the other parent is either untraceable or is unwilling to provide information on their income. Or they are giving you the incorrect information. So an affidavit should be accepted now by the school governing body and the schools. In lieu of the documents that they were asking for before. Because everything that needs to be done now is in the interest of the learner. And where a matter is before court and the parents also have court documents, schools. Are now required to accept those documents as well, depending on the circumstances of each parent that seeking exemption from payment of school fees. Close thirty-one is substituting section forty-two of SASSA. And this is providing that schools must keep detailed records. On aspects of their financial affairs. They have to draw up financial statements within a specified time. And present those financial records and statements to a general meeting. And you will see there are timeframes now that every quarterly financial statement must be prepared. They don't necessarily have to be audited. That's why also school governing bodies are now being given the power to, or co-opt, co-opt. Members, if they don't have the ability to do this, they can co-opt members who can assist them to do this. And, um, those financial statements, if you read that section in detail. It will show, must show the investments, the donations. Uh, the funds that have been received by the school, the expenditure and all that. Must be submitted to the H O D and keep those detailed records. And then section thirty-two, uh, clause thirty-two, my apologies, is amending section forty-three of SASSA. And this is giving the H O D the powers to authorize an investigation into the financial affairs of a school. And once again, if the H O D has reasonable cause, just cause. Is not just for any other reason, maybe some misappropriation was reported to the H O D. And if the H O D deems it necessary, then such investigations can be carried out and the H O D. Can appoint forensic auditors and forensic investigators. Close thirty-three is amending section forty-six of SASSA. And this is providing that, as we already know, no one can operate an unregistered independent school. And if they do so, the penalty is being increased now. Uh, from three months to twelve months imprisonment if convicted. Section thirty-four is amending. Close thirty-four, I'm sorry, is amending section thirty, section forty-eight of SASSA. And this one is to do with independent schools that have been subsidized. And it's providing that the M E C can set conditions for those subsidized independent schools. So that, uh, they have to submit quarterly reports if so requested. And also submit audited, um, records and accounting statements if the H O D so requires. Close thirty-five, as deals with, um, substitution of section fifty-one. This is to do with clarifying or adding more clarity in regard to home education. And this section must be read with that section on compulsory home attendance. A compulsory school attendance, which says compulsory school attendance is from the age of six now. To the age of fifteen or up to grade nine, whichever comes first. Provided the learner finishes grade nine at the end of the year, that's a compulsory attendance age. Now this section is making it clear that learners can in fact be educated at home. But only if they are registered for such education with a department. So if a parent chooses home education, the parent must apply to the H O D for registration of that learner. And the H O D is also required to approve that application. If the H O D is satisfied that that home education is in fact in the interest of the learner. So. H O D is going to look at a few things, is it in the best interest of that learner? Does the parent who is applying for home education actually understand, uh, home education? Do they also take full responsibility to implement that home education? Is the education suitable for the age of that child? For the grade and the level of that child and the skill abilities of that child? And that's why the section is saying the H O D may, case by case, may send someone before the application is approved. To verify some of these things because H O D has been given a list of conditions that they have to fulfill. In order for them to approve homeschooling. So if conditions so require, the H O D can actually visit the home and just find out. Whether what has been presented is correct and in the interest of the learner. This section equally, uh, provides for the responsibilities of the parents who want to do home education. For instance, they have to avail all the resources for learning, they have to monitor the learner's academic progress. They have to arrange for the competent assessor. Remember, we defined the competent assessor as an educator, um, who is registered with S A S. That competent assessor, uh, must do an assessment at the end of each phase. Each is grade R to grade three, grade four to grade six, grade seven to grade nine. And then the parent must submit evidence that the learner's assessment and attainment and a report. So that the department is aware that the child is getting the correct home education. The H O D has the power to cancel after consultation with the parents. That application, the H O D can also decline that application, but obviously the H O D has to give reasons. And for the H O D as well, there are very stringent timeframes for the H O D. If a parent has submitted an application for home education and the H O D has not responded within sixty days. Then the section is saying the parent, uh, will deem or it will be assumed that. The application was approved, provided the parent can show that they had put in an application. So there are stringent measures on both sides for the H O D as well as for the parents who want to do, um, homeschooling. And all this for the interests of the learner. Close thirty-eight is amending section sixty, um, of SASSA. And this is to do with state liability. And it's saying that, um, the state is not going to be liable. As a result of any act, anything that is done or any omission that is done. In connection with any business that is operated by a school, if you enter into a lease agreement. And you did not have the correct approval and there are issues there, the state is not going to be held liable. Um, then close thirty-nine is amending section sixty-one of SASSA. To empower the M E, uh, the minister to promulgate or make regulations. These regulations have not yet been made. This section is just saying, Mister, you have power in the future to make regulations in respect of. Management of learners' pregnancy. So there is information out there that is saying the minister is regulating learner pregnancy and testing and sex education. What this section is saying, the minister has the power to make those regulations. To manage learner pregnancy in the future and also admission of learners, uh, the norms and standards. These two, uh, regulations, the section says the minister must bring those regulations through parliament. And of course, through the provinces and to the public for comment. So when that happens, comments will be made in those regulations. The minister can also, uh, make regulations in the future on education districts. And other issues that deal with matters that the minister may not have been able to expand in this bill. Then close forty is just amending the preamble of the South African Schools Act. If you read the preamble of the South African Schools Act, very profound preamble. That protects the rights of learners. And now the minister is adding that there will be promotion and protection of the right to basic education. That is being added in the preamble. And now I move to Employment of Educators Act. You'll find this from clause forty-one. Clause forty-one is amending section one and five of the Employment of Educators Act. And most of the amendments here are really technical. It's just to delete reference to basic education centers. And also to F E Ts, because as you know, this one moved to the Department of Higher Education, but they still appear. In the Employment of Educators Act. So those references are being deleted. And then clause forty-three is amending section seven of the Employment of Educators Act. And this is, uh, dealing with the promotions of the educator establishment. In order to bring it in alignment with the constitution. So that due regard must be taken in when posts are being filled, looking at the issues of. Equality, equity and other democratic values and principles. And this section seven, which is being amended, it's also proposing that. Uh, there's a possibility of appointment on promotion. That can be made when an educator is still on probation. Um, clause forty-four, forty-five and forty-six is also a technical amendment deleting some words. Clause forty-seven is, uh, amending section seventeen of SASSA. And it's just widening the list of serious misconduct for educators. Clause forty-eight is also a technical amendment. Uh, but of importance to note is clause forty-nine. Because this is inserting a new section in the Employment of Educators Act. And it's prohibiting the conducting of business with a state. Either in a private company or doing business with the state. And it's creating an offense that if an educator. Is found guilty of doing business with the state, they can be convicted up to a period of five years. So there are serious penalties for that. It also states that the employer must terminate. Edu- educator who is found guilty because this will constitute serious misconduct. Clause fifty, uh, is amending section thirty-five of the Employment of Educators Act. And it's giving the minister the right to make regulations in regard to norms and standards. And especially staffing in districts. Section thirty-eight is deleted by clause fifty-one. And clause fifty-two and fifty-three are also technical amendments. And then clause fifty-four tells you that this act, once it is passed, will be known as the Basic Education. Laws Amendment Act. And it will come into operation on a date that will be fixed by proclamation in the Gazette by the President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh. Uh. Monica, we, we are joined by his worship, the mayor. Uh, Omne Wetum Dalosese Abonga, uh, Siawemugela Mayor. Uh, we also have, uh, councillor Colley and councillor McKenney. From, uh, I might be pushing your names, please accept my apology. Um, you are also welcome councillors. Uh, if we have not seen other councillors, you are welcome. Um, I did acknowledge the presence of the Department of Education officials. So I'm, uh, uh, Fue Tumadondo, uh, Siabonga, uh, Daretta. We are now going to, you will know, you will have noticed that I said throughout. Because we want, uh, the clauses to be properly presented, all of them. Um, I, Nishilo Maskalukuti, Asisanga, Njoguzo, Ugozofezu, Bosukuti, Sienzilele Program. So Sizotela, Umfue Tu, Ukakasha, Umfutuzund, Naie, Uzo Ishorena, Olga Makereva. Naie Uzo Ithaza, Uh, Uktoliga Rapha, Nrotuzo Zamukuti, Ika Zenjoba Beishono. No, Monica, Uwenzel, Uktison Kesiizwa, Emvano, Lokowesok, Uzobesengtazu, Utlalodogut, Imbuzo, Sizoi, No Ma Imbonosizoye, Muganaranjan, Um, Fue Tuzund. We need to go to the bank to buy a ticket. In November, in November twenty twenty-one, we were in the hospital. We were two in the cabinet. When it was twenty-sixth October, twenty twenty-three, we were in the parliament. My job is to tell you, I'm a singer. I'm a singer, 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 I'm a singer. Competent assessor. I'm a 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 competent assessor. It's number two, some teachers. It's number three, one. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's number four. It's number five. I'm a singer. 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 It's number five. It's number six. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's number seven. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's 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 a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's 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 a singer. I'm a singer. It's 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 a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's 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 a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's 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 a singer. Two thousand and five. It's thirty-eight. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a overdraft. It's a binny. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm a singer. I'm a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. I'm 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 a singer. It's a singer. It's a singer. amalja, oma ibonoktinge, kangi ngai za thezwa kala, o gugu nyazo, o gubu wenzewe, wupeni ngesimo se smali, ze eskoliska hulumeini, amalja, utela, twaninga mapugomkulu, o gubashola ma report ney itadmendeze smali, ze eskoliska hulumeini, nama ko gaba twaninga buku, nama ba pey, be forensik, guba ba pey, ngesimo se smali, ze eskoliska hulumeini. Iska ba thirty three, sekuluma ngoktrichila, iska jana thirty three, sekuluma ngoktrichila, wesi kaba forty six. O guse, ge, iska ba thirty three, sishloso, sishloso kubieela, iska ba forty six, se sasa, ndogo inyo sa isjesi so, sisuka eznyangi nezis two, basie wesi ngo twelve, eh lapo, omuntu esungula futi, abanezdeskolismele, esina palisiwe, incho bo ye yomnyango. Bese guti iska jana thirty four, so na, sishloso kubieela iska ba forty eight, se sasa, o guse, eslinza gela ngo guti, ukaso, olunigwa eskolismele, lo ngaxinze, o ngobimbandela, eh itile, enu nyua ngondangoshe. Bese iska jana thirty five, so na, sishloso kshincha iska ba fifty one, se sasa, o guse, start ise, ngo gufundela ekaya, guti, inte njali, ekube kanjali, ngo kubieela kato sa guti, abafundi, bangafundi selwa, emaka ya, oma wupela, be gupalsele lo. Bese iska jana thirty six, so nas tlosa kubieela iska ba fifty nine, se sasa, o guse, eslinza ngo kubieela, o kwepeche futi, eslinza ngo guti, lapo ngomzali, nama imopomu ye omuntu, epalisa omfundi, o guse, eskoliniska hulumeini, nama ifra iskele, zo okuluwa, anga ikoki mali eskoliska, bese nige zminilingwa, twaninga manga, nama ikoshi sa, nama inige zompa lo omkunya ti, nama ompa lo ati uyipya ngendela, yo ompa lo kala, ube ngo yona, uyoba ne kala. Iska ba thirty seven, tlo ngosa, ukfagwe iska jana, iska jana thirty seven, tlo ngosa, ukfagwe iska ba fifty nine eh, se sasa, o guse, eslinza gela ngo ngesinti, lazo, azulula, o gungabo, nina solinye, oma wenzaga, gubaninga bano, pakati we SGP, ne incho wo yomnyango, nama ipinga bano, pakati we SGP, ngondangoshe. Bese guti iska jana thirty eight, so na, sishloso kubieela iska ba sixty, se sasa, bese iska ba, sekuluma ngitala lumbuso, lapo wenzey, nama ilipipu, nama wenzey, oma naga lo itile, o tinda isvumeluano, ngangana, nama imopomsebenzi, obe wenziwaa, iskoliska hulumeini. Bese guti iska jana thirty nine, so nas tlosa kubieela iska ba sixty one, se sasa, o guse, siveze, o guto ngondangoshe, wunda amalja, wenzay mtetu ngo, eh tinda ukse ngatwa, o gukulelo abafundi, o gwa mugele abafundi ekoleni ka hulumeini, o wengabele okoka, ma hole, anga ku nyasiwe, nama guni guswa, wesi ngyezuzo se imali, nama isnzuze ngeyoni mali, gubasebenzi, amanom, sin standards, amanangane, eskungweni esutugisa otisha, wasisfundazwe, no khlela, esindi manimsebenzi, ye se fundazwe, zemfundo, kanyenluasi, no shelo, lemfundo, aselo. Bese iska jana forty, sishinze ga, ngo ukfagwe bi sa, kwebi nzaana, kuisandulelo, se sasa, o guse, guxelu imfundo, yesanane, ngo karambi sanogo figela, ilu ngo yelo, lemfundo, eh issege. Man, je sekuluma ngoktrichila, umtetu, wakashwa, go tisha, ka nineteen ninety eight, umtetu seventy six, ka nineteen ninety eight. Iska ba forty one, si kloso kubieela iska ba one, eh ee eh, ngo kusasa, ezinti sekelo, esespelelo iskati, o guse, lomtetu, buhamzani ga she, no shelo, le zemfundo, olusha. Bese guti iska jana forty two, sishloso kubieela iska ba five, eh ee eh, ngo kusasa, ezinti sekelo, esespelelo iskati, o guse, lomtetu, hamzani ga she, no shelo, le zemfundo, olusha. Lesiska jana susa i ngulumo, eziti, isiku ngo zemfundo, ngesiwe, nokakashwa, isiku ngo zemfundo, issege lo, ya bandaba dala, isiku ngo, neti, esizinda. Iska jana forty three, sishloso kubieela iska ba seven, eh ee eh, o guse, sebenza, nas ekarambi se, ne nama ip, eh educator establishment, ifuti siyansay hamzane, nesinti sekelo, society of constitutional laws act, ka two thousand and five, umtetu five, ka two thousand and five. Bese iska jana forty four, so na, sishloso kubieela iska ba eight, eh ee eh, ngo tlo ngosa, guba kusasa ngulumo, esespelelo iskati, eziti, omka, neti isku ngo, eh zemfundo ya bandaba dala, nokakasha. Bese guti iska jana forty five, sishloso kubieela iska ba nine, eh ee eh, o guse, eslinza gela ngo, kliulselo go tisha, kuska shana, koma mu ye omnyango, kanti iska jana forty six, so na, sekuluma ngoktrichila, wesi kaba eleven. So na ge, so na ge, sishlo ngosa, guba kususu, nama kama sepelelo iskati, ati isku ngo, neti esizinda. Bese iska jana forty seven, sishloso kubieela, kubieela iska ba seventeen, eh ee eh, kufaga ibinzaana, eh landisa, uluze nzo, ez u guspatha gubi kakulu, kanti iska jana forty, forty eight. Sishloso kubieela iska ba eighteen, eh ee eh, ngo kshongosa, guba kusasa ngulumo, esespelelo iskati, eh iti isku ngo, zemfundo ya bandaba dala, futi, si bandara, yu omnyango, zemfundo, wesi fundazwe, kule se skaba. Bese iska jana forty nine, sishlo ngosa, ukfagwe iska ba nineteen, esisha, eh ee eh, esina vela otisha, o wenzay i bisnesi, no hulumeini, nama wabi abakundi, sibengampani ka hulumeini, no mesismele, zenzibisnesi, no hulumeini, futi, eslinza gela ngo guti, o gue poola, futis klinza gela ngo guti, o gue poola kala lo ko, kuslinza gela, o sikhio, we kala, kanti iska jana fifty. Sekubieela iska ba thirty five, eh ee eh, o guse, senesela, amalja, ngondangoshe, o guse, a wanzo wenzay, amazenga, nama kape, nama kapele kashwa, wabasebenzi eh fundeni. Iska jana fifty one, so nas ikrita, iska ba thirty eight, eh ee eh, esespelelo iskati. Bese guti iska jana fifty two, so na, si kubene ushajul one, we eh ee eh, ngo kuxongosa, guba kususu, o klinza gela, o seshpelelo iskati, o guti, ye se kungo, skahulumezi zemfundi ngesiwe, nokakasha, nama iskungo skahulumeini, zemfundo ya bandaba dala. Iska ba fifty three, so na, sishloso kubieela ushajul two, eh ee eh, ngo kshongosa, guti, kususu o klinza gela, o seshpelelo iskati, o guti, iskungo skahulumezi zemfundi ngesiwe, nokakasha, nama iskungo skahulumezi zemfundo ya bandaba dala. Si pino eslinza gela, nangeskati, iskalo kulu nyanga, so ushajul two, ogumbela, si desesingatiwe, nga, so iska jana fifty four, so na, sishinze ga, ischo go, esfushane, sanomtetu, kshongoswayo. Bese, sishinza, ngo guti, lomtetu, ma ukale uksebenza, ngo sugu, olubede, ngo ngoma meili, ngesmemezelo eh esikaze ti, o wupela lapo, eh ummelwe to siso, ibamba lapo na ti, seabo.
Seabo, kulu eh, kakasha eh. Ngogo za ma, guti, songe si, zwe kache, le nguluma. Eh bagumea benge na kazu, ngarafe, guti, jenge kometi, lesemfundo, senza njeho, o suthu nyo umtetu szekele, so namxange, umsebenzo, etu glalela nje, eh, injenama lunga, so omxanga no eh, omparati, eh, nyabonga, yutu stolili iskati, eh, so guto ubenati, ngo wapela, jenoma olu omparati, na ni nesel, balegi le, egutinis shaye imtetu. So ge si, sishlangano, ngomtetu, kubieelo eh, o we, o we zemfundo, namxange. Nkazile, ge si zo, wenzaga, nje nage, wenzel, ngutikunga be eh, neti sword. Ngezonipinombolo, ngo gubangala zamakame, eh, nebongose, ago, ngangacholipilo, o te ma usufiga, egu, lokuluwa kulumu, o zo kalusi sho ika, manesbo. O zi sho guti eh, eh, ngipunga, guwati bani, ngo, ngo songe krishe, la South Africa, ya kumto ngapume watin. Ngipunga watin, ma, ngumaspa la, emande, ma, o guti, umaspa le mande, ngenza, esbonel. Eh, ngo guto, puma wato rose, o timpuma wato rose, ngenza, luti ngakumbuzlo. Sorry, 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 mpo, ngakumbuzigele, o, I'm appealing that, I'm to give you numbers. What will then do when you get the mic, you introduce yourself, eh, you tell us where you come from, eh, in terms of your word, you then make your point. Ah, ngela futu, tezela labakit, sina kulumi, inkinga zo guti, obabunya ndaye pasakona, nama wale tanga konamans, namxange. Eh, omxanga na, o ngakolo, konamxange, o guti, mpa kona, gita uko. Eh, omxanga no, o ngaku, tingita u, tabalalo umtetu vivinyo, wese zemfundo. Eh, nyaz, guti, bianze, ga si bonumea, bese, si vua omoya, eh, si funu kulumalezo, zinto eighteen, tezaseklale. Nyakela, wenzel, tinha, be ngatasko npan, eh, ngo bago su, bese nyakme sa, banje, shantetu, ke sache, zo angeskati futi, ngena kela nage, to guti sina, pindo, sikhio, futu, o ngato, ntsiga kulu, o ba, ngezogwema, bese gutoa, eh, wafiga, inzizo, alapayati zo, yesbezela, emxanga nweni, gota, yesngamula, asmambisa, njenala, o, isokala, genkati, nombolo, lezo ten, eh, eh bese se appendula, eh bese spude, startez, ye subo nguti, lo ko gusfigisa groupi. I'll start taking ten hands, so it means it's one, we get ten. Bese se appendula, we appendula, aga, utatu etula, chinaje, jenama lunga, se abuga nje nje, o guti, we appendula, si tata, lo ko fanele si tate, so as, asenza, nje nje, lo siyazwa, na ngeti. Aga, oktula, batu guma, ngate, eh, guno mfo etula, o nombolo one. Ngela, ngela, umutaku le, gu, three minutes, majegu, abonale, lababa, nguzabawa pete, nama washak, akalai. So, ali, ndamfo etu, mzonmala, no, ke kala, wenzel, nguti, eh, ne sugumeneze, gulai ni, gota nyazo, be no ten, eh, my councilor here is number two, eh, omfo etu, o number three. Eh, my councilor here is number four, eh, there is a hand, a lady, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we are number five. Eh, there is another hand, I think, is, is a lady there, you are number six. Ah, 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 eh, ba, ba, o zo ba, o number seven. Eh, ama ngako, agusolo, tu, akpokela, wwe, ne we two, number eight. Eh, number nine. Eh, one, 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 going, going, gone, so ge si, u nine, o wamange. There is another hand. Polisal, that's love.
... Atisla, Amadungas, Fmterto, eh, Usokaya, Umea, Esaniti on Protokons Obsepti. Italutu, Ngisho, Umuti, Lapamvotingao. Ikamaba. Enzaya ko. Ikamalaminguka, Chawan Tumba. Dipuma eh watsa, Bendi nine, etiwe, Ni gotang, Selenzela, Umnyango, Oisen, Fundo, Ellet, Ettis, Trade. So, Benfutu, Ngiti, Analen, Umuti, Ngibanga. Anpasamisaslan. Ngibanga, Ndametetos, Vivino. Ngibanga, Ndametetos, Vivino, Umuti, Usatata, Usisepamili, eh, Ngenge as well. Godwa, Eh, Nomasebe, Banile, Oktile, Oktanda, Umuti, Gubel, Uptaga. Senisa, Eh, No, Godwa, Nge, One, Ah, Nati, Gubel, Uptaga, Blomte, To, Vivino. Uti, Ndametetos, Vivino, Um, Close Two. Ukuluma, Eh, Insegiso, Umuti, Isengane, Mas, Beses, Colene, Ofana, Deses, Colene. Oh, Dama, Nge, Umusufigwe, Apola, Fifteen Years. Otima, Beksi, Sa, Umba, Ne, Umuti, Gshutisiti, To, Ukraine, Nine. Nange, Seningi, Ngane, Eh, Presidente, Lini. Nengi, Ness, Paramiso, Nga, Ba, Umnyang, Was, Wasen, Funde, Mas, Singi, Na, Panzi. Uso, Uyo, Pella, La, Ugrade, Twelve, Umuti, Si, Kupule, Imyala, Isa, Iyo, Ka. Isa, Iyo, Ha, Van, Nga, 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 Ugrade, Twelve, Umuti, Gubey, Bo, Eh, Umuti. Singa, Basa, Ali, Kfanele, Si, Insegisa, Uthumduana, Ohanda, Iskola, Ases, Kete. Uso, Si, Figele, Isimoso, Uthubenesen, Gane, Es, Presidente, Lini. Ngibanga, Apulimpatsla, Ndametetos, Vivino. Gea, Osaporta, Ben, Lumapena, Ustasutin, Kamu, Parututu, Ngikul, Melinyang, Ben, Komuni, Eh, 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 Personal Level. Gea, Osaporta, Usisa, Pamili, Eh, Iwona, Uti, Nga, Bangutu, Eh, Gubel, Upasi, Gabama, Patslak.
Eh, Mpatu, Oshelo. Eh, Ya, Bengalela, Nam, Uh, Tige, Bonabonka, Bandwa, Bakona, La, Ogwe, Ikaba, Zabo. Eh, Mpatitolo. Eh, Ya, Nga, Ugubewa, Ugubewa, Umuti, Ngshlo, Nipumpatu, Oshelo, Nga, Lemla, Mbenganga, Nsa, Su, Uma, Nga, Ba. Eh, Benzo, Guxola, Ogunye, Sebe, Kavele, Godwa, Eh, Ogutngsho, Npumpatu, Oshelo. Angsugu, Meni, Ngibege, Ogukalu, Uti, Uzwa, Gala, Ga, Asle. Oh, Ikamalamingu, Eh, Ouse, Muwagwa, Zwane. Eh, Ngikona, La, Lenda, Wala, Ema, Nde. Ngisale, Wat, Three, Nase, Wat, Eh, Thirteen, Ngilano, Three, Nshen. So, Ya, Ngibona, Um, Sumtetu, Uzwa, Gala, Ga, Asle, Sumtetu, Vivino. Eh, Gunezintezimina, Eh, Kalan, Kfisukala, Nga, Lena, Esi, Kulinyi, We. Yen, Llela, Yogui, Pata, We, Nga, Ne, Skoli, Umuti, Izipizintee, Bonagala, Zu, Ogupamba, Ana, Ndametetu. Eh, Beset, Begwa, Kuchu, Uti, Igupu, Nafanele, Queens, We, Nga, Nne. Eh, Ungata, Tiga, Kul, Uti. Oma, Nga, Begue, Ina, Se, Zubegwa, Ngshekosumbi, Napane, Telle, Ni, Kufanele, Yinzwe, Njaani. Ungabu, Kuchu, Sumtetu, Gbese, Lo, Kuti, Kufanele, Yinzwe, Njaani, Ma, Si, Pambo, Giga. Ngobinki, Ina, Zes, Suga, Gete, Makai. Si, Inema, Makai, Asya, Ichay, Umuti, Uzokshaya, Wena, Yegalena, Ndispa, Paramise, Nezu. Ma, Ni, Ma, Si, Figu, Skoli, Ni, Uti, Shapin, De, Be, Umzali, Uthu, Nga, Ba, Upin, Dusho, Njaani, Sumtetu, Uthu, Ti, Shupin, Da, Be, Umzali, Nga, Nne. Ma, Senza, Lo, Ke, Se, Benze, Sesses, Colene, Se, Gui, Ta, La, Lo. So, Gukona, La, Nga, Tiga, Shaisa, Sana, Kona, Ganana, Nga, Godwa. Ngabu, Kuchu, Uti, Kuvelu, Uti, Kfanele, Tuke, Yenzwe, Njaani. Nga, Ba, Glenza, Uti, Besi, Figu, Es, Poli, Nisi, Patua, Nanyin, Llela. Ekai, Figi, Patua, Nanyin, Llela, Wa, Ita, Uthi, Na, Nle, Limi, Yokchutuka, Eh, Pambe. Oguspi, Ilen, Kfisugubera, Ogungavili, Nda, Ola. Ugubel, Sembala, Nwe, Ni, Oh, Babumeya, Besanzo, Kolo, Gwi, Ot, Nga, Ba, Watingla, Gwi, Legislation, Naya, Nkolo, Gwi, Ot, Nga, Ba, Uko, Lukun, Kuna, Kuna. Eh, Amakaplin, Poti, Zapinde, Abe, Gabantu, Chua, Ba, Pegelela, Ma, Assets. Impata, Eskole, Nakogongo, Gunya, Gwaskole. But, Unenki, Ngalanu, Uti, Izinto, Naimpata, Zes, Kole, Ippi. Monga, Pera, Leli, Olo, Siklona, Sengenesa, Wenisaba, Nabantu, Abal, Kata, Eksu, Kune, Mini, Leli, Leli, Olo, Le. Oma, Nga, Pera, Equipment, Ela, Nga, Paratizila, Lo, Indime, Nga, Ola. Godwa, Ma, Uya, Es, Colene, Kutweli, Zintee, Ningene, Bizaga, Ku. Es, Kole, As, Katwa, Epsu. Nasemi, Eh, Kunomuntu, Jutrina, Eh, Ukuchu, Banonge, Na, Uba, Lo, Pumaye. Be, Ungan, Oni, Uti, Department of Education, Niki, Begue, Indaba, Yoke, Pepper, No, Figelela, Gwem, Pala, Eh, Colene, Nga, Ba, Goutala, Inagi, Inku. Kutwena, Se, Umoche, Gimali, Nkuna, Uli, Umnyang. Ogunga, Ubay, Umoche, Gubebewa, Akse, Nchonchi, Well, Zonke, Lezintee, Ilan, Nga, Parat, Nomazalinya, Azu. Eh, Besu, Kfanti, Gyo, Kokela, Le, Mpata, Layo. Tante, Ugubebegu, Nomutosala, Lapayana, Boknabuzwa, Gya, Ana, Uguti, Lezintez, Hambega, Njaani, Aircon. Eh, Nala, Omazuja, Amafushane, Eh, Inkosi, Ndisin, Se, Goodnight. Eh, Ugubes, Sondore, Legwe, Tue, Eh, Ketingos, Number One, Ketingos, Tua, Ma, Jangzorala, Nga, Ngishu, Uti. Gea, Hamdiana, Eh, Ndametetos, Vivino, Eh, Ayto. Nga, Ba, Wala, Nmpe, Nga, 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 Ke, Kamili, Nbus. Eh, Ah, Mka, Ke, Ju, Isu, Ju, 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 Ju. Eh, Ta, Eh. Okay, Eh, Mka, Ke, Ju, 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 Ju. Eh, Nme. Eh, Eh, Eh. Eh. Stupish. Okay, Twa, Ju, 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 Ju. Oh, Nga, Pella, Malika. Nne, Na, U, System, For, That. Ubi, Ju, 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 Skadi, Ju, Ju, Skadi, Ju, Ju, Si, Es, Colene. Ah, Nga, Kafusha, Wanjwe. Ikhusha, Wanjwe. Ah, Nga, Ma, Matula, Eh, Nga, Ba, Wala, Eh, Wala, Wala. Eh, Nga, Ba, Wala, 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 Wala.
... we name slide is in a peso. Uh, we got four thousand this is totally. Um, email was so show you to the footage. Sam capitalize as capitalize call this paradise. This tinder am S G B. But S G B not to answer. I'm mad. We take it when I want to. Tila we can bang out. We take them on the design.